Spend a ton of time there, but just to get you up to speed, we're going to spend the bulk of the time tonight on the comprehensive plan. Looking at both the draft goals that we have put together as well as some land use and policy things. Hopefully, we'll get you up and moving during the meeting and get your thinking caps on a little bit too. So eat quick and then we'll put you right to work. So I won't steal all of Steph's thunder, happy you're here tonight, so I'll let you head right in.
Yeah, that sounds great. So I think there's some of you that maybe I met very early on, this is a reminder Stephanie Vulkers with SRF, Project Manager of the consultant team assisting the city through this process. So appreciate you all dedicating the time for us tonight in this conversation. So you do have quite a few different things in front of you. There we go, including the agenda, you have a copy of the PowerPoint and along with our first activity when we we get there. But as Amy mentioned, really, we're going to focus on just a quick update on where we're at in terms of our three plans in this process. And then we're going to spend most of our time again talking about draft goals that we have working. And then also digging a little bit into getting some thoughts on land use. And then we'll wrap up and highlight on where we're going, where we're headed. We've got a very busy week next week, we've been in there as well. So feel free to interrupt me as we move through this agenda as well to move on. But just a quick again update on where we're at in the process. Of course, you all know we have three plans that we're updating as we're moving through. And then the engagement portion that is weaving through everything here as well. So wanting to update you on each individual plan and where we're at. Obviously, some of you are on or have been on different steering committees throughout this process as well. So that's exciting to kind of have that continuity as we move through. But really, for each of the four, the three plans, there's really four phases that we're stepping through. Starting with existing, collecting that data, existing conditions. Then our goal and strategy development, which is really where we've been so far in the process. So we're kind of at that, past that point or just finishing that goal and strategy development for both plans. But specifically on the comprehensive plan, we're presenting those draft goals as we have them today to you. And that really brings us into phase three, which is our plan element exploration. So really where we're doing that nerdy part of the planning analysis. And then our final phase will be the plan recommendations and review. When we're summarizing everything that we've done throughout this process and putting that into that overall comprehensive plan. So we're on the later half of the process for the comprehensive plan. But specifically what that means for what we're working on right now here in phase three. We've got some engagements that is happening that we'll talk about at the end of the presentation here with our stakeholder conversation. And some pop-up events that are happening throughout the process as well. But really, as I mentioned, we're deep into working on land use. We've sat down with staff earlier this afternoon and had our markers out and we're looking at land use. And we're going to be headed in the next couple of months here looking at transportation and utilities and things of that nature. And as part of that, we will also be doing some small area plans. So not just the future land use plan that you're used to seeing within the comprehensive plan, but digging a little deeper into three key areas in the community to provide another another level of analysis and guidance from a development perspective. One last thing I wanted to touch on here quick was from the comprehensive plan perspective. If you remember back to early presentations, state statutes require that there's nine plan elements that we need to talk about in our comprehensive plan, which are the smaller icons there. But because of the engagement that we heard early on in the planning process, we have added recreation as a plan element within the comprehensive plan. We heard a lot from the public about the importance of recreation, the great amenities that we have in the community. The great part that we have here is we do have the outdoor recreation plan that will provide that specific long-term guidance. But wanting to make sure it was elevated within the comprehensive plans, we've had that space in there as well. And that's a good transition into our update for the outdoor recreation plan. As I mentioned, we're at the tail end and completed, have completed the data collection and our goal and strategy development. And we're again in that that phase three of that plan element exploration. And what that means for the outdoor recreation plan, we have some pop-up events happening in our stakeholder conversations. But right now, we're deep in the needs assessment. So for the outdoor recreation plan, we've done, we've worked with Mike and his team to really understand the inventory of the facilities that we have available in the community. Now we're looking at what we have and what some standards say for what communities of our size should have for the different types of facilities. And really doing that assessment of what we have, what we need, where we want to be going from that standpoint. And then we also have the bike and pedestrian plan, which is again, we're also in that third phase of the plan analysis perspective, looking at our recommendations and implementation. And really, what does that mean? We had some walking and biking tours over the last month here that got people out and moving in the community, both walking and biking. And our our partner, Ulta, is our consulting partner for the bike and pedestrian plan. They are deep working in some awesome recommendations and implementations. And then the last piece I wanted to highlight in terms of just a quick update is of course our Engage RF, which is our online engagement platform that kind of serves as our public website, what are our updates for the planning process, but also provide those opportunities for people to provide input and interact with the planning process online. So just giving you a quick update on some metrics that we've had, over 6,000 visitors of the site. You know, that could be every time you log on, that adds to the ticker there. But we are almost at 700 registrants to the site. So let's make it a mission tonight to tell four more people to get registered there and then we can get over the 700 mark. And and then 673 activated participants. But that graph there really shows some of the peaks. And so I heard a couple talking, a couple people talking about some of the efforts we've done in terms of the pet mayor or offering some pool passes to help people participate. And we see some spikes there, especially when we put something out on the Facebook page or things like that. I will note that there's a couple of extra details about the metrics of Engage RF in your PowerPoint. I won't get into them because it gets a little sweet, but if you're interested, I see Sean smiling, he's probably interested in those metrics. So we put it in there just for you, but I won't go deep into them. But the exciting part right now is there is some active engagement for the comprehensive plan. And then there will be some new engagement coming out specific to the outdoor recreation plan after we have our steering committee meeting next week. So did I miss anything on updates? Okay, perfect. So then we're going to keep moving in, so hopefully we gave you a little time to get to the thing in your mouth because now we're going to push you to work. So moving into really kind of an update on the comprehensive plan. We've been working really hard with the steering committee and staff on establishing our goals. And when we look at goals for this long-range planning process, it's something we want to do early enough in the in the planning process to understand where, what's the direction that we want to be going, where can we be going to inform the analysis that we're doing. But we think of these as draft throughout until we get to really close to the end of the process. Because we want to make sure through that analysis of the goals that we've set, that they're actually feasible for us, that we haven't set a goal that's unachievable or we didn't set our sights too low. So it's an exciting part or time here and we're kind of solidifying what those goals goals could be. So we did set and worked with staff initially to develop these goals based on the key themes that popped out from our early public engagement. So these these concepts are included in the engagement that we received from the public in the early early parts of this year. And then we presented these goals to our steering committee, which is our plan commission. They had an opportunity to take a look and revise them as well. And that's what you're being presented with today. And we do understand too that there again is an opportunity for us to change. So as we're reviewing them here today, we also want to give you that opportunity. Do we have too many? Are there some goals that could be revised or refined with thinking from that process as well? But before I give you a couple of minutes to read through the goals, I wanted to just talk about the structure that we've created for how these goals are going to be included in the plan. So first, we are, we have our overall goal statements. And our goal statements are really identifying that overall direction or desired outcomes for the city. So these are written in a way that we're saying River Falls is the condition that we want to be in the next 20 years. That's the way that these goal statements are written. We will then have priorities that are going to be, and these goal statements are meant to be overall. We don't have five land use goals, we have our 13 right now overarching goals for the comprehensive plan. Then specific within each plan element, we will have specific priorities identified, which will be kind of refined through the the planning process that we're in right now through the analysis process. So is that housing affordability, is that housing diversity? Kind of some of those priorities popping up that are really those top issues that we need to be looking at when we are looking to achieve our goals. And then we will also have specific implementation actions. That's really in some ways the most important part of the planning process that's going to tell us what actions do we need to take over the next 20 years to achieve the vision and goals that we've set forth. We, that's kind of that at the tail end of the process where one other time they will be getting back together. But just so you can kind of understand how those three aspects work together. So you do have in front of you our draft goal statement. So there are 13 of them so far. So I want to give you just a couple of minutes to read through them yourself rather than me reading all of them. So maybe just a couple of minutes to take a quick look there and then we'll we'll talk about. Oh, yeah, so what we're going to be doing is you'll see the goal statements there on the left-hand side and then all of our plan elements on the top on the right-hand side. And so what will be, if you want to give some thought on which of the plan elements relate to each goal statement. So you know, we have housing and land use, obviously, when we have our second goal there, that's about housing that aligns. You could put a check mark there with your housing plan element, but it also is related to land use. Because of course, land use is going to dictate where housing goes. So you can give some thought as you're reading through those goal statements about which plan elements the goal statement aligns with. But then we'll come back and kind of do that as well. Give you like 30 more seconds here while I fix this easel. It was too short. So we'll kind of work through these, but as we're having a quick discussion, we want some initial reactions from you as well. If this is a goal statement, they're like, do we really need this one? And we're reading through them too, is there other things that could be combined with others? And then want to just have a discussion again about which of the plan elements you think they align with as well as we're stepping through here. Again, our goal as we're working through is to make sure that these are comprehensive. Again, they're meant to be here are our goal statements for the comprehensive plan. So we don't want to have goals that are too specific and finite that really are hard for us to implement. We want to make sure that they're they're broad brush enough that they they cover enough topics, but that they are also specific enough to give you the guidance. So when this plan is adopted and you're at a council meeting making a decision, you can clearly connect to what one of these goals say, yes, I support that because it aligns and helps us achieve this goal of comprehensive. So we'll start, just kind of read through them and then ask what you guys, you know, give me your thoughts, get you guys talking as well. So the first one is River Falls is a livable community that is welcome to all. Any initial reactions or the plan elements that it aligns with for you?
That's my goal, I'm not even saying that this word should be a community that's welcome then. Should just be expected.
I think it's expected, but I think it's safe to say it. And it's a reminder, it's like, you know, it's it's just a constant reminder.
And in our last survey, that was actually one of the pieces that was really low was there are groups of people that don't feel welcome.
It actually, it sounds like, you know, like the overarching goal. It's almost pretty much identical.
Same, housing and economic development and partnerships.
Maybe we should consider a livable and sustainable community.
Well, yeah, and livable kind of could could cover that too. Yeah.
Yes, and this has gone through a few iterations of the word, nothing, but it is, you know, I think there, we will make sure that part of the plan also includes some definitions. Because resilience for one, as one means some different things, it's also a word that means nothing to some people. So we'll want to make sure that some of those terms have a definition for what they mean.
Actually, I think of my strong one.
How about the second one? River Falls has a quality and diverse housing stock that provides a range of affordable and accessible housing choices. Obviously, that one aligns with housing, but did anybody check that you had the other plan elements?
Land use. I was just going to say land use, I can't, partnerships.
Hey, maybe we'll ask what this one's doing. The next one is River Falls has a sensible transportation infrastructure that provides opportunities for people to safely, sustainably and efficiently move throughout the city and into the region using very. Did I skip one? Oh, geez, okay, as a robust and diverse local economy that supports businesses and provides a varied range of job opportunities and provides access to goods and services that support.
Talking about city. Yeah, yeah, I just. I'm having a hard time wrapping around that one. I mean, obviously, we need to have that built, but.
I think we'll figure that, that would be part of the process too, how do we do this? These are our goals and then we'll figure out how do we do that, how do we make sure we have that, whatever the goal might be to meet that goal.
Yeah, that's really the the part where we're in is what are the resources or programs or tools that we can put or policy that we can put in place to achieve and really that implementation plan at the end is what are those steps that we can take to achieve what we set out? Any of the, obviously, that one's an economic development. Maybe a little bit more specific, any other?
Utilities, because I mean, all of anything that's like utilities or facilities have to be there.
Transportation to get human from. Natural partnerships.
We probably have to throw recreation on. What we in Tandrasall stated things, right, for why they're here, will we like to play trails?
That will move to our transportation one that I tried to skip to. River Falls has accessible transportation infrastructure that provides opportunities for people to safely, sustainably, sustainably and efficiently move throughout the city and into the region using very well transportation.
They're good, they're, yeah, it's a great goal. I think we're we're close in some parts and a long way away in other parts.
And the comprehensive plan is a 20 or 10?
20 years, yeah.
I think urban development is a huge piece. I think there's opportunities for partnerships with this one too.
And we'll go to our next one, River Falls prioritizes prioritizes its diverse, unique and rich natural resources, environmental features and biodiversity, so our rivers or blocks are woods.
I need you some recreation.
Wanted to be very careful with that to ensure that the verbiage that we get at the beginning in terms of priority ties is over. You know, just be very careful about that. Okay, if we move to our next one, River Falls celebrates its diverse range of existing and historic cultural resources that represent the entire River Falls community. So that term cultural resources is another one that would be defined as something that not only represents the history, our history of historic buildings, but cultures that maybe were here before, our original cultures that were here before us. Or any of the just kind of sense of place, what it kind of means to be a member of the the River Falls community. So that goes beyond just our historic buildings, so we talk about cultural resources. Any thoughts or reactions on that one or on elements it aligns with? Obviously, resources. Then we have River Falls incorporates resiliency considerations into decision-making to preserve quality of life for all residents and protects investments for future generations.
Some utilities.
Then we have River Falls has mutually beneficial relationships with the community, organizations, educational institutions and state recreational agencies.
One-sided goal.
Yes. As we were intentional on the mutually beneficial component of of this goal statement and obviously we can. Yeah, you can't guarantee what you find to get back out, but that would be the intent of establishing those relationships where they're beneficial. Okay. Then we have River Falls incorporates equity and inclusion into decision-making and funding processes and is a place where you can feel free to be yourself. Thoughts, comments, reactions to that one? We had lots of discussions about being a safe community. And of course, identification of what safe, of safe community is, it's different to each of us. And so we were trying through particularly this goal to try to talk about that being free, feeling free to be yourself in a different way than making a claim that we're a safe community. That's a hard, hard one to say, not to say that our places aren't great, but just trying to be a little bit.
Feeling safe is more than just.
The plan elements that that one aligns with for you. Okay, then we have River Falls is a resilient system of infrastructure, community facilities and utilities that ensure that health, safety and welfare of the community are maintained and supports the economic that's allowed. So here we're really looking at, again, thinking about those art infrastructure pieces that the city maintains and that they're a key component for being a great place or being able to have to live here. Got just two left here. River Falls has flexible growth management policies and development standards that promote human skill development and redevelopment that is consistent with the community's values.
Support of strong connections to place.
And support of strong connections to place.
Someone's got to define human skill development. Places all in with the whole people.
Yeah, people rather than hers. Okay, strong channels, thing where people feel like walking down the streets, it's, it's, you know, it's it's skills for you to walk rather than drive through with little built stone.
And by flexible growth management policies, we're talking about like, we're not just going to sprawl, like, we're controlling.
Yeah, and that's kind of, that's kind of a human.
Okay.
Size too, it's like, okay, but we're not going to sprawl. Yeah, strong connection to place, so.
So I'm not sure that's how I read that as a staff person. So maybe that's a good, good topic.
Yeah, I just want, that's what I wonder what it.
Flexible growth management policies and development standards means that we are encouraging. Flexible growth management policies and development standards means that we are encouraging and trying to that, that may mean that we don't set a River Falls standard that we're willing, more willing to work with developers and people who are wishing to develop. Not, I'd like where you're going, because maybe that's something that's missing. I don't know that we're talking about pace of growth or or that in the way that you were mentioning, which I think is not a bad idea, right? I've heard that from more than one councilperson saying how fast do we want to grow? How, how fast do we want to consider development proposals? I'm not sure, maybe I'm just reading that differently than it was put together, but I think what we're saying is as growth and stuff comes in, we're going to consider people. But I'm not sure we're saying we're gonna go slow and we're gonna be deliberate, which actually might be something we may want to add. I mean, a goal may be that we want deliberate growth in a way that represents our, I don't know, works with it, but so if that's what you're kind of thinking, or maybe you weren't, but the thing is, I, I just heard, I heard something different there than what it means to me.
What to me, I think I think one of the really attractive pieces of River Falls coming from the cities is that there is a center. So like, if you go to Woodbury, there isn't a city center or in other places where, and there's nothing wrong with that. That's just how it was created. And I, I grew up in a town like this where there's a downtown, a city center. Still, you know, vibrant business downtown, sort of like there was a place for people to go, kind of, I don't know, meanings, but um, thank you. So, I don't mind growth at all, but I think when we're thinking about growth, both housing and industrial, keeping the idea that people are attracted to River Falls for its schools, for its vibrant downtown, for the natural resources and that we don't move away from them.
Oh, I, I don't think like, some word like deliberate or mind, well mindful, so, can't change right now, but um, you know, yeah, because, because I think it's possible to, to to not be so intelligent about how we grow. I think the whole thing was, for example, this is my own personal opinion, the, the whole thing with Sterling ponds and the, uh, apart, well, actually, it's not the only, with the heart and dedication. This made me really kind of realize that they do not feel connected to River Falls. So that was, in my opinion, a stupid place to build a lot of houses. You know, they may as well be, you know, they, they just, they've got to get in the car to get anywhere in town and, you know, I, I I'm impressed that they've got such a strong environment out there, but I think growth wise, that was a decision maybe could have been avoided.
So I'm, I'm not, I definitely don't want to do that, the planning, because they're better than me, but I'm just trying to help, I'm trying to understand what you're saying. So I think there's two things there that you've helped me to see. One is that center. So I do think that there's, I don't know what we call that, but I think what we're saying is one of the goals is that there's, there is a mass or center of gravity for our community in place. Whether it's the flagpole on downtown or wherever, but there, and that when we make decisions about land use and resources and all that, I, I guess this is a question, are we talking about a goal that says, we're gonna consider our current kind of center of gravity, you know? And so then when you had a Sterling ponds residential neighborhood proposal come in, you'd have to consider how that connects to the rest of the city. But then I also hear the deliberate thing. So to me, there's a couple of things that you, the council may be reflecting or that I'm not seeing in all view. I saw a few head nods, but, but I'm hearing a couple of things. And I've heard deliberate many times from many council people. That you're fine. I don't think there's any anti group, I don't sense an anti-growth theme. We generally are pro change and not not that opposed to, but I think I'm hearing that. So I don't, I don't know that, that's why the statement number four talks about transportation, particular being connection. Um, the connection, there's connection themes with River Falls as mutually beneficial relationships. There is some of this center of gravity in the River Falls prioritizes diversity, rich natural resources. In other words, we, we have a vision of the bluff, the river. Which that, that, there's three of these that come up in our citizen survey repeatedly, every, every two years for eight, um, let's see, we've done it five times now. So, five times in a row. Unique natural resources, that's, that makes us different than all other communities in the benchmark survey. The safety thing is, safety and welfare is always like drop, one of the drivers. And then this education, school thing is always in there, I think. It, I think it goes back and forth. I think schools was in like three times and what was there? Other than schools in a couple of years, but basically natural resources is coming out every single time, like that's, that's like high satisfaction rate. So, I, I don't know if you guys have some thoughts about that or if you want to just take notes and come back, but.
Yes, I think for me, the, maybe what I'm hearing in terms of, this is, there's all these goals and translates to, let's see, we'll talk about a little bit too, we can give it in with time, but I, I guess I'm wondering when we're talking from a being deliberate and development, this, and Scott's right, the intention with the flexible growth was being that we don't have policies that can tough us to, having to do something one way that we do have some flexibility in, in working with the developer or, you know, getting involved in development in a different way to help us achieve what we believe was going to help River Falls in the longer term is what we were doing there. That kind of gets us to some of what you're thinking in terms of deliberate development, but I'm wondering if, because I think there are some other goals where we think, we've been talking about sustainable development in our conversations with staff. So as we're thinking about whether Sterling Pond or another area that we want to make sure that it's connected, that it meets this goal of being connected by all modes of transportation. So I don't have to have a vehicle to live in that neighborhood. But that it also has opportunities to have both affordable housing and diverse housing stuff that we're thinking about. So it's um, being deliberate and, and working on all of these goals. So would it I'm getting a sense that maybe we should take a look at trying to be a little bit more comprehensive, having a goal that's a little bit more specific on what we're trying to say there in terms of deliberate development.
You just want to box yourself in.
Yeah.
I like, I like the flexible growth management. Because that's kind of what we do know.
Yeah.
And it seems to be working pretty well. Although, you know, I'd like the flexible growth center to be flexible enough to say no.
You're sure.
Yeah, so then it, maybe it's flexible in the context of, again, I'd, I'd have to think about yeah, some of you suggest like this center of gravity concept, which I'm. Flexible can be, no, that doesn't fit with our.
Right.
That, yeah, that we can.
Well, I think, I mean, for me, what I, what I'm thinking about in terms of like the center of gravity concept, which I, I kind of like center, centerpiece around it is the idea of if we build a housing development that is not directly connected to downtown, then that has to be part of the plan of putting that development in, is that there's a trail system or some way for people to bike or walk into town safely. Um, and that, that can't, so like for Sterling pond, that doesn't exist. And so then it's part of the initial development versus though we figure this out 10 years later. So that would be the deliberate part for me, but.
Well, I'll, I'll echo you on that and say I like deliberate as well. And, and like a lot of words, right, means different, it's different people, but, but I think it's a good choice. And, you know, Stockman is filled with a lot of, I always have a hard time with Mike's image stuffy because it, they're just always going to be very air like, you know, and just not comprehending, right? And I think I know someone else on this council feels that way too. And, and so to that end, I'm gonna throw a word, I'd like to see somewhere in here, Main Street. And so important, I think it's important to care, to care just about us is to have a main street in this community. And I don't think in 30 years, we're not going to have one. But I feel good kind of codifying that we all care about that and getting that in there.
You know, I think, you know, she and all that, I ran a Facebook site, a River Falls community, right? Or not the community, you know, you're from River Falls. But anyway, we did a survey on there and we had, whatever it was, 2,000 people responded to it. Number one on there, what people think of River Falls, and some of you won't know what this is, but is the loop, which is Main Street from where there's, you know, um, and, uh, north and south.
Where you do the U-Trends.
Where you do the U, well, there's only two spots, right? That would be many U-Trends, but that was the number one. Nick, because what they said, then elaborating on that is the loop, Steve's Pizza, the movie theater, the downtown.
Well, you turn around a Jerry's. That's what it was, the U-D.
That was the loop. The loop was the. Then the number two thing on this survey, again, with over 2,000 people that are River Falls people. And they said the number, number two was the parks and our recreation here. And there wasn't anything else close. The university was like seventh down on the list, but, um, and other things, but number one was the loop and downtown businesses. And then the, the parks, Glen Park and the candy and the record, outdoor recreation. Nothing else was even close. And that's what people, when they think of River Falls, that's what defines this community. And that was even in front of family and friends.
Awesome. I think we've got some work that we can do to align with, um, this last, this flexible growth and changing a couple of things around there. So then the last one, River Falls has a system of recreation opportunities that is accessible to all residents, provides connections to natural resources and supports a healthy lifestyle.
I think you said there was 13, there was only 12 there.
Maybe we did, I, my brain had 15.
Does the council think that their recreation is something that should stand on its own? Or do you think there is some kind of nexus between community facilities and natural resources? You want, it's, it's financially? No, I mean, in this state, the state of Wisconsin has these nine elements. And we're basically saying we're special and recreation is special and we should have a separate element. Which is the recommendation at this point where the draft, I don't know, how strong do we feel?
I, I like it. We can put some standalone, because recreation is not just the natural resources, but it's also like all the program, programs.
We're talking outdoor, we're not just talking rep, we're talking outdoor recreation.
We're, we're talking about outdoor recreation standpoint, that's a direct connection for the outdoor rec plan into the comprehensive plan, but there's also, you know, that active, um, lifestyle components also, you know, commuting as far as, you know, movements and some of those things. So it can be a little bit broader. Um, and, you know, to Scott's point, there are lots of, recreation gets talked about in a lot of comprehensive plans, but it gets tucked in in different areas depending on which community you're in, whether it ends up in natural resources, sometimes it ends up with our utilities and community facilities. But through the process, because we heard resounding about the importance of recreation in our park system, we thought that that, that's where, probably not where we're at today, is making it its own statement. Obviously, it's not going to be as deep in the comprehensive plan because we have the outdoor recreation plan that's going to go deeper as well, but making sure that it has that space in the as well, was the, is the recommendation that we're at right now.
I think it speaks to the uniqueness of our city and, uh, social arrangements that we see come with it.
My birthday's tomorrow, it's the 13th, so that must be my favorite birthday. Right, that. So, um, I think, you know, we're, we're still, obviously here at Farming, a little work to do, but again, if you guys go home and have any other thoughts, feel free to reach out to staff and we're continuing to work through this as well.
Yeah, so if we had a bit more time, I'd do a speed round and ask you, if we're going to cut one, which would it be? So if you are inclined to do that, email me, I would be interested in hearing that. I said, said this, but I definitely want you to hear it. We may party sound. We may not see 12 as a nice break in. We may see nine. I want to make sure that we've got a plan that's manageable for staff and you. And let's see, we've got a lot to, so.
Yeah.
That's part of the human's hail development is, is having enough humans to do the development.
So we're gonna keep us moving kind of to our next piece, which is on land use. So, um, I'm gonna give you a quick intro while Amy is handing out our pieces, but I'm sure you, most of you have heard me say this, but the land use, future land use plan and that growth guidance is really the foundational reason for why we have a comprehensive plan. Um, as you are approving zone changes, then you can be consistent with our future land use plan and our comprehensive plan. So really that's that core uh, foundation. Um, and so hopefully this isn't anything new to you, but of course we start with land use, which is the the general guidance for what type of use, would we like that property to have, um, that then translates into zoning? What are those specific regulations? What are the specifics? Development types, where can that building be sited on the property, uh, things like that. And that really changes, puts us into that, what is the development that is achieved from that standpoint? So the future land use plan that's included within the comprehensive plan really has, will inform what River Falls is in the future as it's used from a guidance perspective. Uh, it should be used on a pretty regular basis. But when we're thinking about land use planning in general, there are a few things that we want to be thinking about, about why we have it. Um, and it's really meant to protect the health, safety and welfare of residents and investment. So it's not just cities tool to be able to control what happens in a city. It's really meant to protect what you have invested in your own property. Um, as much as it keeps you from doing something, it also keeps your neighbor from, uh, you know, doing something that you don't want your neighbor to do as well. It's protecting your, the property values consistently. It's, um, protecting and existing and planning for future city investments. So it's also our tool as we're thinking about our park system or our utility system to understand the growth that we forecast into the future so that we can be thinking about making, uh, resilient investments in infrastructure, things like that, that we're planning things, um, from a fiscal perspective as well. Um, that we protect and preserve community and natural resources. We're thinking about those great amenities that everybody connects with and protecting those through our development planning, uh, that we have growth and development guidance that's accessible to all. This is meant to be something where as an economic development tool, a developer can come look at the comp plan and understand where they can go in the community or a property owner understands kind of what the city's direction is for the areas surrounding their property. And then it implements community identity and sense of place. So it's again, our way to make sure that we maintain uh, that we've talked about or that there's access to parks and things moving forward. So that was just a very quick overview because I want to get to our land use exercise. So what you have, uh, before you is just a general map uh, of the community and using the dots that you, we, you have in front of you. Uh, we want you to think about three areas where you would like to see growth. And that can be, you know, growth that's outside of, of city limits. If there's one area where we'd like to see development or if you'd like to see redevelopment, if there's an area that maybe needs some attention, sure, you can put a dot there. And then you've got one opportunity with your red dot with the X is an area that you want to protect. That no change should happen in that area. So identify those areas on your map. I will be collecting, I would like to collect those for me so we know. But once you've identified your three areas, I'm gonna put up, um, this map here, I've got some more dots. And if you could come and put your top And if you could come and put your top development area on this map, then we'll have a collective map. So I'll give you guys a couple of minutes to go through that.
So the three check marks are off. We've got two different messages here.
Oh, sorry. Yes, yep. Your, the check marks should be where you'd like to see growth here, but my apologies.
And red is stuff.
And red is where you don't want to see any change.
Are we supposed to save one for the big day?
No, but that's more downstream. You can use all four on your personal and then.
We don't, are, are we limited within the lines or no?
No.
So you can use that. Unicorn stickers.
It's a tough decision, really.
I want to see if you are here and I want to see if it's here. Directly here, I mean, this whole.
Here, I'll, I'll write, I'll put an arrow for you.
Put it around the whole city.
Want bigger sticker.
Put definitely on the whole map.
We figured you want to get up and stand up and stick a sticker because I know every time we've done it on CIP. Nobody wants to show them that here's where they're gonna put their sticker.
You can turn the map or.
Well, at least this way you're not reported on the, the video.
This is where we don't want.
Thank you very much.
I'll share the other little pair of scissors.
But seeing that, everybody. Interesting, I think the only area where we had duplication was in this big general area. We could have all used more dots. I think Lydia had them there, but. Any areas that stick out to somebody that you want to describe where you put your dots? Okay. Yeah, you can do that, yes.
Something like that up there because we have a, already have an agreement in place for developing all that area. I mean, it was up to me, I put a dial over everything. The whole, there's nothing that is enough for. That wouldn't work. I put it there because we already have a development. Shit, I can't see bone. Yes.
I cannot even proper agree.
Excellent. Melissa, where, where's your dot?
I put it just south of the high school. So the green one bottom.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no. There's development kind back out there already. But it's still a pretty connected area.
I put mine just to the left, it's the yellow, it's the left of Lawson Court there, just down, yeah, right there. There is, everyone knows that spot well because it's property that just, it's interesting, it translates card use. So there's.
Are we talking Paul Kugner?
Thanks. Um, I put a dot. It's actually a cross between like North Main, which I think has simple developments. Possibilities to make it feel more like a connection, like an extension of downtown. Um, you know, and also, also Riverwalk. It's a lot of development possibilities on the river.
Well, I put, I put mine on the other side of the mayor's arrow. I think, I think one of the things I'd like to see us do deliberately is look for infill spots that will start to square up our city because we've got these balloons on a string with sterile ponds and different places like that. So those infill opportunities around there, certainly around there. You know, around, around the university there. I think we're already gonna get some opportunity out to where I think Mr. Biersted put his check mark to the west. Those are, those are better to, to scratch us out than, you know, far flung.
Excellent.
I put mine by the old water tower, the Broadway and Sycamore area. There's some homes, apartments there that are, should actually be condemned. And I don't know whether or not condemned, I had, I, I was in a few of them. And I don't know how people are living in them, they should, again, they should be condemned. But I'd love to see that area redeveloped in part of, like what Scott said, is trying to, and what we've talked about is working on our core instead of expanding. So I'd like to see us redevelop that area. Could even be apartments back there. I'm not opposed to more apartments in that area because you have the university and other things that have rented or would be renters there. The other place that I'd like to have is, my second one is where the fire hall is now. And I'm looking forward to that getting done now. So we can develop that area into what it should be or what it could be. And again, that's to the center and core of our community.
I think there's a lot of room for healthy and measurable results in Man Valley. And that's why I put my sticker there.
Excellent.
Yellow dot at the left there, which is just a natural spot.
Excellent. Well, we appreciate, this was the, the kind of the workshops that we were having with, with staff. And so it's really helpful to get your insights. And if you, when you leave, if you wouldn't mind just leaving your, your dots there, that helps us as well. But this is really kind of the, the topic of conversation for our plan commission after student committee meeting. So anything you want to add? Okay.
Perfect. So one of the things we want to do too is is develop a list of things that resulted from the last comprehensive plan. So we can help people understand why, why bother, but what are we doing this? This is anecdotal on my part. Dozen years ago and some now to local government. The last comprehensive plan is the reason you can put dots in so many spots. Because they said, they put in the one in thirty-five. And they said, we are not going to let things go rural subdivision. And they made an implementation plan to aggressively protect that. And everybody's got opinions that I've met in twelve years about, you know, good, bad, ugly. But I think that's one thing that you've been pointing to people who went through the work, the council, line commission residents. Our board member, whoever was involved in fighting and arguing, setting that up. The reason that you can do that is not because we've had no growth. It's because we saved a whole bunch of areas for growth and been able to take this in. So this exercise is not the same in Hudson, right? It's like, you don't, you know, I've heard of members of their council and their administrators say, we have no growth areas left, everything is redevelopment. And, and they don't really even have infill development opportunities because there's something on everything just about. So to those of you who lived here longer than I have, and you can kind of look back in your goggles and say, what was life like in two thousand eight or whatever? Be interesting when we're all selling why you should bother doing the comp, why you should engage, why you should give your opinions, why would you do this? I'd like to get a list of things that you, we can point to to say, you know, you wouldn't have had the green belt system on South Fork, right? We bought a whole bunch of property since two thousand two or whatever. Because in the old comp plan, it said we should have these environmental corridors and we should go out and get them when we can. And so as developers came in, you know, down South Point and other places, we implemented that concept that was in the, the comp plan. So there's a lot of things, I think, that I don't even realize why we have it. But I think you can point to a lot of things in the comp plan. So when people say, well, it's just kind of, doesn't matter what we're gonna do. There, there's gonna be some themes and goals that people really latch on to and then get part of the implementation plan and, and make a big difference in thirty years about what the city looks like or doesn't look like and function. So that's just one I want to mention, given this exercise is, the people who did the comp plan then have made it a possibility for us to think about all the different places we want to develop because we don't have a whole bunch of rural subdivisions that developed. It's a big difference between, I think that comp plan made a big difference.
More St. Coria River next to us, blocking us.
Yeah.
And I think to that point kind of gets us a little to the policy considerations that need. We could just put a future land use plan with some colors in the plan and, and go from there. But there's a lot more to the comprehensive plan that really is, is how we're going to, you know, execute and implement the plan as well. So we just wanted to throw in a couple of things, and this is really the part of the analysis that we're in right now. So it's again, thinking about things like development density. What are, you know, how dense do we want to be? What are the different, you know, as we're thinking about those rural subdivisions? What are we, you know, what is that density that we're trying to achieve? Where does that end up going? Are we trying to, you know, keeping, keeping some of that denser development, you know, within our core where we have existing utilities and some of those things? Also thinking about things like our development appearance, maintaining the look and feel, whether that's our historic downtown or kind of maintaining that sense of, of River Falls as we're, we're thinking through things, being resilient and sustainable in our development. So as I was kind of mentioning earlier, really thinking about the connections to our transportation system. There are multiple ways for people to get around that. We are responding to our natural resources and incorporating those natural resources into development and things of that nature. And then, yeah, again, that infrastructure component, of course, as, you know, city main, maintain utilities. We want to make sure that we're being thoughtful and where we're putting growth, that we're not putting ourselves in a, you know, a fiscal situation where we're having to spend lots and lots of money to provide utilities in an area where we, you know, might have been able to look another place. So not anything we need to dive into deep here, but just wanting to make sure that we're, we're thinking about, you know, just beyond those colors on the map and the policies that get developed as part of this process as well. So really, what happens next, what are kind of our next pieces? As I, we mentioned earlier, we're still deep in that plan element analysis piece. So we're, we're back with markers and maps and doing a lot of different analyses, looking at different programs and things that we would, we think will help us achieve the goals that we've set forth. But we do have a lot of engagement happening here over the summer months as well. We had staff at the Meet River Falls event just this past Saturday. And with River Falls Days, we'll have some more pop-up events happening from all the comprehensive plan perspective and the outdoor recreation plan as well. And you do have a list of these events and activities on the back of your agenda as well. A big one that is coming up here next week are our stakeholder conversations. So we will be here all day on Thursday next week and then Friday morning, having, we've invited over a hundred. I was just. Yes, yeah, so quite a few different stakeholders from different, so we'll have, I'll make sure I got my list here. Recreation, sense of place and inclusion, natural resources, large tract property owners, our local businesses and housing. Stakeholders have been invited, invited to join us for a ninety-minute conversation. These are open to the public as well. So the agenda will include a brief presentation and overview about what it is that we're doing here in Focus River Falls. Why we are talking about that specific topical area and then some facilitated discussions of questions. We specifically invited the people that we did because they are, whether they're experts or they're heavily involved in those components within the community. So we will be looking forward to those conversations next week. And we also have steering committee meetings with both the outdoor recreation plan on Wednesday and then the comprehensive plan on Thursday. So it will be a busy week next week with Focus River Falls activities, so.
Mayor, I know that you don't have it on your cookout schedule. But I think we should have a little bit more material to hand out as council member at, at that, at that event. Because, well, yeah, I don't think we had any last time. And I think it'd be good as we have conversations with, I think, say, you know, and frankly, give everybody one, wrap their hot dog in it or something.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know, is it? Perhaps, just pointing out, your next mayor cookout is Thursday, July twenty first, it says, just the same night as the complaints steering committee. So I don't know if you are on them.
Is that next week?
Yeah. So are you going?
They don't meet me at cookout.
Maybe we won't have burnt hot dogs for the first time.
I guess you just volunteered to be cooked.
What time's the, what time's the plan at six thirty?
Starts at six.
Yeah, I can be there for a while.
So you can burn a few. I've noticed.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. We, we need to.
If any of you, if a lot of you are planning to go to any one specific event, just let us know. Which I know is kind of, but like if you're all planning to go to the Fish Pop event, something, just want to let. But I, I don't know that you're all planning to go to each one of these, so I doubt it's, you're not more than one.
Well, if we put a D behind the fish, we could kind of almost satisfy ourselves. We want to just make sure it's covered.
Like Art on the Kenny is another one where, you know, if you're, if you're at the event and you want to stop by the booth and stand around for fifteen minutes and listen to the conversations, that's fine too. I don't think there's any expectation. Um I don't think there's any expectation that the council is staffing any of this. Um I enjoyed, I spent some time at River Falls Days. You know, Sam and Kendra had the booth, they knew what they were doing. I just was able to kind of stand there. Certain people were looking for the city administrator, they could come and talk to me, just like if they were looking for a council person who had some issue. They could chat with, so it's, it was kind of a bonus then just staying around there, they didn't really need me. If you do go into these, just be respectful of the staff that's staffing them.
Amy, you're gonna have a, at the customer appreciation event, are you gonna be able to set up there? Also, shameless plug, if you want to volunteer at that, I think you're totally.
Uh for council members, again, that's an event where people are generally.
You want to be told how good of a job you're doing, that would be the one to come.
I've never had one customer come bitch-bye, he's always, oh, he's doing such a great job.
It's a pie, it's a good pie. Some members to come to.
And it's fun.
And we're estimating probably another, well, we usually get about a thousand people, we're thinking maybe fifteen hundred with a four to six.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. When, when is it?
Obviously eighteen. And you have council member privilege, which means you can come and not do any work if you don't want to. Ponder around.
Mayor's got. It'd be a sticky dairy.
Shake, shake all the hands.
Four to six on August.
This is, there's a, can you, can you send us all that?